It's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order like welcome everybody to our January Board of Commissioners meeting. I know we had an earlier call meeting in the first of the month, so I can't say it's the first meeting in the month of the of the year 2024, but it is the first official board meeting of 2024. So with that, I'd like to say thank you for attending. Thank you for being with us. Hopefully, everybody has stayed warm for the last couple of days and still has water pipes that are flowing water at your home. So we appreciate you being here. All right, this time I'd like to ask Mr. Kenny Woodard if he would leave a certification or prayer or all of that. Just that he'd rather be willing to see the place.
I want to press pause. I want to take this time, Father, to say thank you for every claim you've done for each and every one of us here, Father. I just ask you to watch over our crew because we're out working on the weather they've been doing in the past couple of weeks. Keep them safe, put a hedge around them, Father, protect them. Father, I just want to say thank you for the folks who are in here and the jobs that they do. Sometimes they're unappreciated, Father. We don't, what we're doing is the right. I'd ask you to give the strength and knowledge to our leaders here, Father, they lead in guidance in this county. Watch over, protect everybody here. You want to tell the precious claim we did for a. Amen.
I'd like to lay this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all. As we go through the agenda tonight, I know that a lot of you are here for some recognitions, and they are toward the end, but the agenda should move really fast. So I do, I wanted to go ahead and tell that everybody that before we start to go through, make sure you don't run for the door right after that. As far as any amendments to the agenda, I do not have any. Do you have any, Kenny?
I have some.
Either of you have any? We'll move on to our consent agenda with no items, our whole business with no items, which will bring us to new business. We do have a few items for consideration under new business. The first is the Tate Mountain Estates dam renovation. This is a grant that we approved the acceptance of on behalf of the Tate Mountain Association. It engages the consulting engineers of Peoples Equitable. It has extended beyond the year, so the the agreement with Peoples Equitable expired at the end of the year and needed a renewal so that they can finalize some of those projects. They have provided us with the engagement letter, which is is the same as what we get approved last year. We just need to do a separate engagement to continue that process and they can complete that. The grant funds that came in, Tate Mountain is also reimbursing on their end for anything that went in excess of that project that's being managed by our EMA Director. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion that we authorize me as chairman to sign the work order with Peoples Equitable to end the year.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions related to it? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on our agenda is our service as fiscal agent for Family Connections. This is something that we renewed a year to work with our Family Connections. It's to serve as their sponsor to go through. It's something that's required annually to go through and submit it to the state of Georgia where we serve on their behalf. With that, do I have a motion that we remain the fiscal agent for Family Connections to continue?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any questions or discussion related to that? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Next is our COVID leave policy. I know that there's not an actual fiscal copy in your your packet. The two years ago, we had a COVID leave policy that was two weeks, which is a 10-day leave amount. Last year in January, we did modify that down to five. When we made that modification, we talked about continuing it for one more year into this year. I would like to make the recommendation that we do move forward with with eliminating that COVID policy. We do still have sick leave, but I would like to make that effective April 1st. Reason behind that statement being we currently have several employees out with with COVID at this time. We've had a handful that have had positive tests, and I know that the severity of it has reduced, but we're also trying to to prevent that from continuing to spread through the building. So I would like to make a motion that we do end that agreement effective on April the 1st and then our policy revert back to our normal sick leave. Do I have a second?
Second.
So with a move in a second, that opens it up for discussion if you guys have got questions or concerns or.
How many sick days do county employees get?
So it varies based on your years of service, but a new employee would, well, I'd say it varies from, kind of hard, it's the number of hours that they receive. So a standard eight-hour employee gets two weeks a year of sick leave. Fire department and sheriff's office, because of the hours and the difference in their hours, really breaks down to be the same on a on a ballpark basis, but it's.
Two weeks per year.
So they do receive two weeks per year, and we have a donated sick leave bank so that if somebody is out sick and they're out of sick leave, if they've contributed to that bank of sick leave, they can actually then reach out to HR to speak with their HR team to request donated sick leave to be able to help them if they have something that's extended beyond that. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the telemedicine services agreement. We were approached by Pickens Urgent Care, a program that they offer to the school system, and it's for students and staff at the schools, where they have a a mobile nurse essentially through their telemedicine program that will come onsite if someone is experiencing symptoms. They can test for COVID, flu, strep, all of those different things. They can actually administer a shot if somebody needed a shot, and they can call the doctor through the tele-visit while they're there, prescription can be done. They wanted all of that service to our employees to be able to come onsite. It is an urgent care visit, so there's a copay that's done through urgent care, but you don't physically have to go to urgent care and sit in the waiting room where you catch four or five new diseases that you didn't have when you walked in. But they would physically come to you. You can pay the the copay and then they'll be tested on the spot. So they have reached out, willing to offer that service. One thing that is required so that they can do that would be a memorandum of understanding between the county and them. They have their own coverage, so that if their nurse were to be injured or or fall or whatever, the liability is on them as well. Same agreement was presented to the school board, the the school system, and this is the same program that's been working for staff and students in the Pickens County schools. So with that, just to get it to the floor, if y'all got any questions, do I have a motion authorizing me as chairman to sign the agreement with the telemedicine services to Pickens Urgent Care?
So moved.
All right, so moved. Do I have a second?
A second.
Move in a second. Questions, discussion, anything concerned?
A second.
With none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a surplus equipment. This is the former coroner's office suburban. I know they're missing it tremendously because it was such a fine machine. It actually served the county well for over two decades. So it started off as a commissioner's vehicle, but it is being surplus. I know that we we provided them with the expedition that is actually the commissioner's, so it's a tradition, apparently would continue to provide the coroner's office with the commissioner's vehicle. But we need to to surplus that vehicle in order to be able to enter it into auction. So with that, do I have a move that approved the surplus of the the coroner's office?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is our quarterly finance report. I'm going to go ahead and apologize to everyone in advance for what you're about to have to experience, but our finance director's daughter participates in Pickens County Sports Recreation Department basketball, where they're having a playoff game tonight, and it may be her last game of the season, so she is back to be able to be there for the game that tipped off at 5:30. You're stuck with me going through and presenting you with the financial information that was provided on the fourth quarter, so I do apologize, but I am going to go through the quarterly finance reports if you can't see that. First and foremost, I know that this is the fourth quarter, which shows year-end. These are tentative numbers for year-end. That is something that I need to make sure is clear, because these numbers get adjusted as they finish processing all the year-end data and getting things prepared for the auditor. So from now through the end of February, they'll still be making the adjustments that are necessary for the payments that came out at the end of 2022 or 23. And we'll go through that. County-wide revenue for the fourth quarter fiscal '22 and '23 shows up at the bottom here. Your '22 revenue was 32,394. '23 revenue was 20, or 36,536. In our general fund, in our special fund, revenues actually came down slightly in that fourth quarter from 747, 747,000 down to 633,000. Proprietary funds, which is Airport Fund, moved from 6,493,000 in '22 to 4,380,000 in '23. Looking at the the chart that shows the general fund revenue to kind of see where it goes up and down, and you can see that the taxes, the variance was up about 642,000, increased in airborne property tax, also in local option sales tax was the increase. Account for that, license and permits were down slightly. Intergovernmental was up to up 801,000 from '22 to '23. That was from local salary benefit grants, reimbursements and grants. Charges for services, we did decrease in some of the revenue from '22 to '23 in that line item. Fines and forfeitures, we had a slight increase. Donations, contributions had a slight increase, one because we didn't budget for for that necessarily. Interest income went down slightly, miscellaneous went down slightly. That was on reimbursements for all of these vehicles and buildings. Other financial sources stayed stayed flat, fairly the same. So you can kind of see the differences from year to year in the fourth quarter. Other fund revenues, you can see in special fund E911 revenue, there's a decrease in prepaid, non-prepaid wireless in what is paid in through the 911 center. That is one of the areas that we know will change from a budget adjustment because that payment came in late, but it is it is in, so they're going to make that adjustment. Water had a slight increase of 26,000. That was from water charges and taxes. And the airport had a slight increase in some of the least increases that occurred in the year. Splat receipts, you can just kind of see a difference over the fourth quarter from '21, '22 and '23. We're very consistent with '21's numbers. We were 7.8 million, and in '20, in '23, we were 7.8, and '21, it was at 7.9 million. We had one year that was kind of an anomaly. The year last year was at 8.6 million. So you can see the differences there. County-wide budget expenditures, looking at the budget of 2023, it'd be at 34.1 million. Prior to the last-minute adjustments, we came in at 92.2% of that, and that's at 31.5. So we've we've got a a starting point here showing us that significantly under budget on that. '22, we were just over after all adjustments were made when the audit was completed. So '22 went from 28.5 in the budget to 28.8 in actual, so it shows them right there, neck and neck with each other. The general government expenditures kind of broken down by category commission in the general budget. We're showing that it's a 50% of the overall budget in the fourth quarter. Elections came in 84%. This should have been right at 100 if you were looking at the total year. Tax commissioner, 86%. Tax assessor was at 105. We had some staff changes that that had occurred, so that budget adjustment's being completed. Board of Equalization, 81%. General government buildings at 98%, showing a total from all general government categories at 67% for the year. As I said before, these are preliminary areas. They do the year-end. They'll they'll produce a year-end report that shows after all adjustments have been made. Judicial, you can see, came in at 97.7% of the total judicial. This report has to do with what I described earlier in the the revenue on the the increase of the revenue line item for the budgeted grant positions. The revenue was up, but the expenditures were up to a lot for that as well. Clerk of the Court was slightly over budget with staffing changes. We're trying to get that adjusted within the budget. We did correct it for 24, but that budget number is correct. All the rest were significantly under under the the budget for the year, so you can see that. Looking at public safety expenditures, the sheriff's office came in showing at 94.37%. Probations, 108, drug abuse, some of that's on expenditures for drug testing, and so they're they're looking at that to make sure we adjust it. Fire was at 105. There was some some budget overtime that that came in that adjusted our fire. Coroner's office is showing at 70% of overall budget. Animal control, animal shelters, the 88%. EMA is showing a significantly higher at 184%. The grant that we just approved the renewal of is what affected theirs because the expenditures that were going to be reimbursed on had to come out of that EMA grant. So it does show that it's it's out of out of whack from budget, but it's also an increase in that revenue to offset that as well. Public works, roads came in 96%. Solid waste of landfills at 112%, and then we were right at 100 with the public education. We keep Pickens beautiful. Health and welfare expenditures, the health department regulations, they did make a budget change through the state to increase another position, so that shows that being up. And I know if you look at 219%, but you're looking at the difference of 1,800 to $3,900 in that line item. Senior center was up over just slightly. There was some maintenance at their facility that had to be done, and the rest were under, bringing that that category of total health and welfare to 89.21% for the total. Looking at college recreation, came in right at budget at 99.96%. You can see rec rec center, swimming pools and library were all slightly under. Program sports was slightly over with the the number of participants that we had participating in the past year. Housing and development, county extension, planning and development, county marshal and economic development, all came in at or below budget with a total from within those categories at 93.03%. And then our expenditures in special fund E911, special fund expenditures came in at 1.457, which was just slightly over the budget of the expenditures for 911. That will account for some of that that I mentioned a moment ago with that transfer that's going to come in on the revenue side, too, so it washes that. Enterprise and proprietary funds, water department operated right at 101% for the fourth quarter, at the end of the fourth quarter, and the airport came in at 93.28%. So the combined total of those two were slightly under budget as well. I'm going to open it up for any questions that you may have on the finance report. Keep it in mind that I did explain at the very beginning that our finance director is at a basketball game right now, so the questions may be deferred to where I'll I'll send you an answer in the near future, but I will do my best to see if I can answer anything you got.
Okay.
With that, do I have a motion to accept our finance report as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
You did a great job.
You did a good job.
I make a motion that Chris does this every day. No, no.
What's your name?
I I have picked on our finance director for quite a while about stumbling up on a number of million or 1.8 or 1.7 or something, and then after I started reading through the report, I went, okay, I get it now 100%. Do I have a, all in favor of approving our finance report?
Aye.
So the motion carries. I'm ignoring the prior motion.
You still have a motion.
For the sake of all the during attendance, we will move on through this agenda. We'll move on into our action items beyond here. The approval of minutes, we did have a call meeting and work session on January the 4th. I'm going to do these in two separate instead of doing that that in with the executive session, I'll do this in two separate. I know that those minutes were provided to each member prior. Hopefully, we've had a chance to review those, and if so, do I have a motion to approve our call meeting and work session minutes?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, carries. I know that you were also provided with a copy of the executive session minutes for your review on January the 4th. With that, do I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from January 4th?
So moved.
A second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is where we get to appoint the BOC vice chairman, who will also have to present the finance report in the event that I'm absent from the meeting based on your attempts earlier. With that, do I have a recommendation or a motion from either of you to recommend the vice chair for 2024?
Only because of the finance report on the Commissioner Tatum. Will that rule for ensuing year?
Well, I will second. All right, so we have a a move in a second to appoint Josh Tatum to serve as the vice chair for 2024. Any discussion or questions related? Understanding that in the event that from what I'm doing, I'm unable to perform my duties, that you would step in and serve as as the chairman during that time. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess I probably recuse yourself. So we will have Commissioner Tatum serving as our vice chair for 2024. Next item on the agenda is consideration of appointments and composition of the Pickens County Development Authority. Do have a couple of different resolutions here, and I'll I'll get a brief statement at the beginning and try to explain what that was. Bylaws were reviewed and revised. Those bylaws have been in place since 1977, so they were reviewed and revised by the Development Authority members in December. With that, and during that point in time, it was discovered that the six-year appointment terms that had been in place prior to, the law had changed since that time. It made those to where those terms were four-year terms. So we do have a couple of different things that we want to make sure that we get ratified, and we get those on the floor as well. In addition to that was the composition of the the board. I know for the last couple of years, there have been eight members. I have a resolution recommending that we move that position back from eight members to seven members. And the resolutions that there are currently eight positions on said authority, Board of Commissioner believes that the the number of positions should be decreased from eight to seven. That way, we have a a tie-break ability and not the potential for a split board. So with that, do I have a motion to approve the resolution of changing the total numbers from eight to seven on the Development Authority?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. The next item that that falls along with that category of what I was describing before on the term adjustments to make sure that we have the correct terms, it does kind of require going through a reappointment. Three members on the the Development Authority who are currently on there with the the way they've changed from six to four, we need a reappointment that would put their terms expiring September the 8th, 2027. Those members are Gary Edwards, Dan Poole and John Woods Weaver would be the three members on the Development Authority that that would just adjust when their terms would expire. So with that, do I have a motion that we approve the appointment of those three to continue through September 8th, 2027?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions?
Thank you for your service.
From the board.
It's a good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Next is, and because the term expiration's a little bit different, would be a reappointment of Todd Payne to continue serving, and that term would expire on September the 8th, 2025, to be consistent with when the expiration should be within there. Bylaws, do I have a move to reappoint Mr. Todd Payne to serve?
So moved. Second.
Have a move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, and and we actually have Mr. Raffield here. I know we had the honor of having Steve Lawrence serve on the Development Authority, and as he left office as mayor of the city of Jasper, he had stepped down from that position as well. So I would like to make a recommendation that we appoint Mr. Kirk Raffield, the current mayor of Jasper, to serve in his place. That term would expire on September the 8th, 2027. With that, do I have a move for an appointment of Kirk Raffield to serve?
So moved.
Move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Raffield.
Thank you.
Next, we have for another term that had expired, Mr. Tony Young has served, and we would thank Tony for his service on the authority as well. With his term expiration, would like to make a recommendation that we appoint Ms. Michelle Tidwell, who is eligible and has indicated her willingness to serve on the Development Authority with an expiration term of September the 8th, 2025. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Ms. Tidwell on the board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I made the motion that time because I know he's the one that reached out to you. That way, you can be met at both of us and not just him. So thank you, and welcome aboard, Ms. Michelle. Thank you very much for your willingness. Next item on the agenda is to move on to our planning commission. Consideration of appointments on our planning commission. I know that we've had the Mr. Clayton Prepple, who is currently serving as the chairman, and with his term expiration, we'd like to make a recommendation that we reappoint Clayton to continue serving on the planning commission. He's indicated a willingness to do so. This would be with an expiration of his term of December the 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion to approve, Mr. Prepple?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, on the planning commission, we've had a vacant seat that we've been working to try to get filled, and at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation that Mr. Jason Mayfield be appointed and serve on the planning commission with the term expiring on December the 31st, 2026. Do I have a move to accept Mr. Mayfield?
So moved. Second.
Move in a second. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is consideration of the development of a Pickens County Ethics Ordinance. Call for a future work session in a public hearing. I know that staff has provided each member with a copy of a draft for an ethics ordinance. The purpose of of bringing that before tonight is that we can get that on the agenda for our work session coming up on February the 1st. It would also be to authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to exist on February the 15th during our regular meeting on February the 15th. With that, I just would like to see if I can have a move that we advertise that as a public hearing, so that we can get that on both of those agendas.
So moved. Second.
Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of amendments to the financial management chairman policies and a call for future work session and public hearing. Same as what we described before, this would be so that we could put that on the agenda for our work session on February the 1st, but then at the same time, do the advertisements necessary to have a public hearing during our regular meeting on February the 15th. With that, do I have a move to approve or to authorize the the advertisement for a public hearing?
So moved. A second.
Move in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Got one more that's almost identical, but it's on a a separate topic. So it's a consideration of amendments to the zoning ordinance concerning the adoption of land intensity map application for lower-density land use intensity districts. County-initiated application and options for final approval of applications. Call for a future work session and a public hearing, so in order to to work through those changes to our zoning ordinance. On that, I would like to recommend that we do the same, that we have that on our agenda for the February 1st work session and for a public hearing on the 15th. So do I have a move to authorize the advertisement of that public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Have a move and a second. Any further discussion?
You busy me. Does it well.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those were tough.
You did a good job.
All right, so the next is to bring up our employee recognitions. I know that's what the item that most of you have been here for tonight. We're going to start off with a couple of our years of service recognitions first. We have two actually from the same department. We're going to do you both separate, but I believe after we're finished, we can get a picture with with both of you at the same time. That'd be great. I'm going to start off with with someone who has just completed their 10 years of faithful service through the county, Ms. Tammy Jarrett, has served in the tax assessor's office for 10 years. I made this joke when Melba was here recently, getting her 20-year pin, is 10 years working for Roy Dobbs is probably the equivalent.
He ain't wrong.
But Tammy Tammy has done an incredible job. She's got that steady that steady presence in the building at all times, and we want to thank you for your service for 10 years. I know that that Mr. Dobbs would like to say a couple of words before we present you with your place. I'm going to let him dive in and say a little bit first.
One of the things I want to tell you all about Tammy is she's actually worked for county government 17 years. We've just been lucky enough to have her for the last 10. You're going to hear me get a whole lot more wordy. You're going to hear me get a whole lot more wordy when I start talking about Stephanie, okay? Tammy's one of the reasons that I can say so many nice things about Stephanie. And I want to thank Tammy for coming to us, helping us try to keep up with all the changes in this county. Thank you so much and for all you do for our tax collections in this county. Thank you, dear.
Thank you. Also get a ten-year pin so you can wear it with pride. What do you think the odds are that we all pick the same candidate? Before we do the second one, I know that, uh, Mr. Dobbs is going to have a few words he wants to say as well. The next is another tax successor employee that we get honored tonight is Ms. Stephanie Gooch for her thirty years of service to, uh, Pickens County. I know that we all think she must have started when she was about ten. When I said that Tammy was very calm and steady and even. We kind of have a contrast to that, so we get to recognize Stephanie. But Stephanie's been, been, uh, an amazing employee. She, she will put you in your place if you're wrong in a heartbeat.
Doesn't matter of yours, the head of the commission.
No matter. She'll come and say what she's thinking and we were very, very excited to have you here and thank you for thirty years. But I know Roy had a few words he definitely wanted to say.
Come on up, Stephanie. Now, for those of y'all that don't know, this gentleman here is Hollis Stamen and that's his wife, Diane.
I saw mom and dad.
They're responsible for this kid right here, okay? Hollis only worked for Pickens County Government for forty-four years. Okay, so you got a little ways to go.
Then he got mad at me and got me all together.
I didn't think thirty years ago that this day was going to get here. January in nineteen ninety-four, this young kid looked like a Jack Russell. I want to go work, I want to go work, I want to go work for the county. And I'm sitting here going, this ain't going to work. How many weeks did I give you? Give her two weeks. Next Wednesday will be her thirty-year and two-week anniversary. She reminds me of that for a year. But I'm going to tell you something. I wrote it down where I wouldn't do this. I'm going to give you a few bullet points. If anybody here wants to challenge me on any of these, feel free, I can back them up. First thing is this lady's product knowledge and education, you ain't going to find no worse. She's that good. Number two is her productivity. You hear a lot of stories about government workers, everybody standing around watching somebody else work. She's the opposite. It's unbelievable at what this one person produces here. Well, if you do a lot of work, surely it ain't going to mean you're good. The quality of her work performance is phenomenal. Hmm, didn't expect that. Customer relations, people like her. She likes people. She works in the tax office for government. Pretty good, pretty good accomplishment. And last but not least, one of the reasons that I wanted to introduce Hollis and Diane. She is the future of our office here in this county that's growing like wildfire. I hope she tries to beat Hollis's record. For all y'all's sake, you get more than you pay for with her.
She actually have a thirty-year pin. The only one I'm going to challenge of what Roy just said is when he said you like people. So I don't know that that part was, was actually legitimate, but people like you. I, I think start left and work your way to right.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Oh, look, see, I'm not ready. There you go. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all haven't had these meetings yet. Stephanie is a fireball. There are very few people I can say in my life I've been scared of. She is definitely a fireball. We do have two more employees I want to recognize and, um, go through just a little bit of explanation before we do these, these two that we want to recognize. There's, there's certain careers that you go into and you expect to be put into a very difficult situation. Um, somebody that signs up to be a fireman expects to see some tragedy. Somebody that signs up to be a death to share for somebody that works on the road in public safety expects to encounter difficult situations. Uh, most of the people that would sign up to work in a recycling center, that's not something that you would expect on a daily basis that you would be encountering. Um, on, uh, January the tenth, we had, uh, an unfortunate incident where a gentleman, while delivering his, his trash to the recycling center, uh, opened his door and fell out and ended up passing away. Um, we did have, uh, a gentleman that had passed away while, while there at the center. And we had two employees that, that dove into action and they immediately did all that they could to try to save, um, that individual. And you just don't expect to have to be in that situation. So it's tragic that we've lost a, a member of our community. Out of respect for the family, I'm not going to go into details on the, on the who and everything in the public meeting. But to have men and women that work and are willing to, to just dive into action immediately afterwards, started asking for more medical training so that if an incident occurred in the future. Um, not only the two individuals that we're going to recognize here tonight, but the remaining staff that was there that tried to assist is just what makes us so proud to serve, um, alongside you guys. So tonight, in recognition of their selfless and outstanding service and dedication on January the tenth during a medical emergency, um, like to call up Mr. Peyton Couch and Brad Benson, if you could come up. At the same time, I would like to ask Kenny Woodard and Michael Shore if, uh, if y'all could come up as well. So that you can, I know Kenny has a, has a word or two that he's going to want to say and then we'll come around and present the plaques. And, um, I just want to say thank you, guys. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to start off by saying, like Chris just said, it takes a special kind of individual to start what you're doing and help a total stranger. These two boys right here forgot everything, about everything and went right into action. And they did the best they could to their ability. And I'm proud of, and I'm proud of that work, Rob, Rob Salin.
I'm definitely proud, especially Peyton. Peyton took a situation that was really bad and made, trying to make it, you know, pretty good. And it was a somber day for us all. And we're still working through it and we'll get there. Just hope we get strong from it.
Appreciate you guys.
Guys, we're going to have you stand with us in the pictures here. But thank you. I don't know where to take you. I just got to pick one, start left. I guess go back left. Thank you. All right. We'll move and open the floor for guest comments. If any guests have comments that you would like to make tonight. All right. Well, with no guest comments, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session uh, as to discuss employment and also legal, uh, potential pending litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?